Crystal, are we ready to kick off the city council meeting?
Yes, we are ready.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I will call to order the January 10th City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Will you all please rise, pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll move on to item three, changes to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes tonight?
No changes from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And council members, anything from the team? No? Okay, great. We'll move on to presentations for A, receive a presentation from the San Carlos Library on its annual services report from Jessica Koishi-Lum. Jessica, I'll let you take it away.
Good evening, Mayor McDowell and members of the city council. My name is Jess Koishi-Lum, and I am the new branch manager of the San Carlos Library. I am so pleased to present to you today the San Mateo County Library's annual report for the fiscal year of 2020 to 2021. Our service, our system is so proud to serve our uniquely diverse communities, and about 284,000 people live within our service area. Our community continues to inspire and drive our services. We also continually assess the needs of our users to respond with thoughtfully designed programs and services that enrich and uplift our communities. Despite our challenges this year, we proved to be a nimble organization with a flexible strategic plan that has allowed us to pivot, innovate, and quickly respond to the need to provide much-needed services to the public. San Mateo County Libraries continues to be a high-performing organization. Some standout benchmarks include an increasing population of registered library card holders and an outstanding 93% favorability rating. Locally, the San Carlos Library has 33,000 curbside visits and circulated 177,000 items this past fiscal year. I am also pleased to share some of the ways we have supported our community in the past year. Our ongoing commitment to closing the digital divide is stronger than ever. When schools closed, we immediately increased the number of Wi-Fi hotspots to keep our community connected and learning. We've worked closely with schools and community partners to ensure those most in need have distance-learning support. We've also invested in digital literacy efforts. Our staff began providing one-on-one tech support through Zoom, and our workforce development programs have reached hundreds of people to provide support, given the job losses that followed the COVID-19 outbreak. Our commitment to making our libraries equitable for all was strengthened through staff equity trainings and a new Equity Author Series. Additional author visits throughout the year support community growth, understanding, and dialogue. In addition to this, we have hosted 17 youth authors in schools throughout the county and gave away 55,000 books to a community. As you may know, COVID-19 exacerbated inequities in youth learning disproportionately affecting youth of color. With our history as leaders during the summer and with the encouragement of our governing board to think big, we developed and succeeded in a robust set of positive interventions. For example, we developed Library Explorers, an in-library camp experience, and offered our Families Create program to bring engaging experiences home. We've also expanded our award-winning Big Lift Inspiring Summers program to five weeks, serving close to 1,000 youth. In the next fiscal year, we are looking forward to accomplishing many new and exciting priorities, including opening the new Atherton Library this spring and continuing the work towards new libraries in East Palo Alto and Pacifica, refreshing library interiors and constructing new maker spaces in Foster City, Millbrae, and Belmont, increasing digital equity and supporting critical out-of-school hours, as well as returning to pre-pandemic hours when it is safe to do so. That concludes my presentation, and I would love to thank the library staff for their tremendous work and creativity, our friends of the library for their dedication and their advocacy, our city staff and our council for your ongoing support, in particular Mayor McDowell and City Clerk Crystal Moy for their work on the Library JPA Governing Board and Operations Committee. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jess. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Uh, Councilmember Dugan, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, yeah, welcome, Jess. Glad to have you onboard in San Carlos in this capacity. Um, and a quick question, uh, I'm very impressed. I tuned into the Maker Space that's coming together in Ridgewood City, and will the one in Belmont that you just mentioned, will that be of, uh, you know, close to the same scale and capability, or is that, or is a different vision in mind there?
Oh, that is such a wonderful question. I've been talking with one of my colleagues today about Maker Spaces. I don't know the answer, but I can get back to you about that, for sure.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, uh, yeah, the Maker Spaces, it's a really exciting development. I know, uh, um, my, my kids are pretty excited about some of the capabilities there. And, and just to be clear, regardless of where you live in San Mateo County, you're welcome at all the Maker Spaces, is that, is, and all the libraries in general. I just want to make sure everyone understands that.
That's a great point, John. Thank you for making that. And Jess, it's lovely to meet you. Thank you so much for your wonderful presentation. Um, I feel very fortunate to be Vice Chair of the San Mateo County Library JPA, and I know that the library has just stepped up in so many ways for our community, especially during the pandemic, with ways that you already mentioned, the Wi-Fi, the curbside pickup. Um, and I'm especially proud of the very large expansion of free camps and programming that the library has offered over the summer to address learning loss for our children. So, um, the library is just a very precious community resource, and I deeply appreciate its role here in San Carlos. So I'm really looking forward to working with you, Jess, and thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on at this point to item 4B, receive a presentation from Hip Housing on its services to the community. Joining us this evening is Lauren Borro, and I'll turn it over to you, Lauren.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Lauren Borro, a member of the Hip Housing Board of Directors, and I'm very excited to present to you tonight Hip Housing's new 2022 calendar, if you can see it in my screen. Um, it's an extra special year for us because we're celebrating our 50th anniversary. The drawings are the beautiful creations of the winners of, winners of our annual calendar contests submitted by children in kindergarten through the fifth grade throughout the county. And on behalf, half of Hip Housing, I'd like to thank the city for its longstanding support of our affordable housing programs. We've been so fortunate to receive grants from the city since 1995, including a $20,000 grant this year. And Hip Housing Services help house over 1,200 people in San Mateo County annually. I'm sure you're familiar with most of our programs. Our home sharing program helps match people who have space in their home to share with people seeking an affordable place to live. 12 San Carlos residents were in home sharing matches at some point this year. This includes two new home seekers who work in San Carlos, including a preschool teacher with an income of approximately $45,000. I'm especially, especially proud of our self-sufficiency program, which provides housing assistance and trauma-informed case management to low-income parents and emancipated foster youth. This program is geared towards adults who are in school and have a goal to increase earnings and become financially independent within five years. Participants receive a housing scholarship while they complete an education and job training program and find employment in their field. There were six San Carlos families representing seven adults and six children who participated in our self-sufficiency program this year. Three of these families live in Hip Housing's group home share right on Cedar Street. I also wanted to share that more than 700 people live in our properties that we either own or manage, including two properties located in San Carlos. It would mean a lot to all of us at Hip Housing if you would please help us share the word about our incredible programs. And in closing, I wanted to leave you with a quote from one of our contest winners, um, which describes what home means to him. "My home is like a Captain America shield, protects me and everyone who lives inside it. I love my home." So I wanted to thank you very much for, um, giving me time today to share about, uh, Hip Housing's programs, and I wish you all a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Lauren. Are there any comments or questions? Um, Councilmember Collins, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say hello to Lauren. Thank you for a great presentation, and Hip is in, uh, very good hands with you as a board member, and I really appreciate the partnership that we, uh, that our city has with Hip Housing. I'm really looking forward to our new project.
Yes, so are we. Thanks, Ron. Good to see you out of the pool.
Okay.
Okay, Lauren, I'll echo Ron's comments. Thank you so much for all of Hip Housing's work in our community. I've had the opportunity to refer, um, some residents to the home sharing program, and I, I think it's a wonderful resource. So thanks so much for joining us tonight and for all of your wonderful work.
You're welcome. We appreciate your support.
All right, take care. All right, we'll move on now to item five, Council Communications and Announcements. Council Communications and announcements are brief items from members of the city council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Do any of my colleagues have something to share this evening? What? Nothing to share? Okay. Um, I have something to share. Um, like many Americans, I have been diagnosed with COVID-19. I am in isolation away from my family, and I am recovering well. Um, but if I sound a little hoarse tonight, that is why, and I just wanted everyone to know. So with that, we will move on to public comment, item six on our agenda. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If there are more than five individuals wishing to speak during public comment, the mayor may choose to, well, I'm gonna skip that part. That doesn't usually happen. If the item you're speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the city council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The city council's general policy is to refer to items, items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future city council agenda for a more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. Um, the call-in number is on your screen. Crystal, do we have any public comment this evening?
Yes, we have one hand up at the moment. Uh, David Crabbe, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor McDowell and, uh, members of the, the, uh, city council. Um, I want to talk to you tonight about Vista Park. I don't know if you've been up there for, uh, recently or not. Uh, it's close to my house, and I walk through it every day when I'm walking my dog. And, um, as I walk through it, uh, it's, it's always not quite gotten its act together. It's kind of soft halfway there, but not quite there. Every once in a while, I walk through it, and, uh, there's a, a new plant here or there that's been planted by the, uh, landscape people or the parks people. And I never see any pattern as why that plant is there and how it relates to anything else in the park. And I wonder if there's a plan for the, what the final development of Vista Park is supposed to be. I've written to the planning, uh, to the Parks Commission, and no one has even bothered to respond to my, uh, comments on it. Um, the way that park is set up, it's the, uh, the one path through the center, and the west side is a lot of, uh, shrubbery, uh, native plants that, uh, fill in that area nicely, but there's some gaps over there that need to be filled in. Then on the other side, the, the east side of the path is a grass area, which is fine. It's kind of a nice break between the two, and the grass area side is the, is the view side. But I don't see any plan. I see plants coming in, don't relate to any other plants in the park. And, um, they also, they have, uh, there's one that was, they did about, uh, two years ago that they fenced off from the deer, and it still has the ugly, uh, orange fence around it. And at this point, if the plants aren't gonna survive the deer, it's too late. You need to take that fence down and see. So I'd like to see if the, um, you can ask the park what the heck their overall plan for this park is, and if they're willing to share it with our neighborhood. And, uh, also, um, how about North Crestview? Uh, would you like to see a plan on that? That was promised to us about three or four years ago, and nothing has happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe. Um, Jeff, is, is someone from the Parks Department able to, uh, get back to Mr. Crabbe on his request?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll have Amy Newby, our personal rep director, give Mr. Crabbe a call about Vista Park. And, uh, in terms of North Crestview, uh, there is an approved plan for that, and, uh, it's in the budget, and, um, uh, Amy can walk him through, um, the, the dates and, and schedule for that particular project.
Great, thank you. Crystal, is there another caller?
Yes, we do have another hand up. Joel Cohn, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Uh, yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, sorry, I, this is regarding the, um, is this regarding the SB nine, uh, ordinance, or is that coming later? I, uh, I, I just hopped on this call.
Uh, Mr. Cohn, that's coming a little bit later under item nine A, public hearing.
Okay, my apologies. I'll, um, I, I had a comment about that. Um, please, I'll, I'll yield my time until then.
Thank you. Crystal, is there anyone else on the line?
No, there are no other hands.
Okay. Moving on then, we will go to item seven, Consent Calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull an item from the consent calendar this evening? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through J.
And I will.
Okay, I think we had a second from Councilmember Collins. Thank you. Crystal, could you please call a roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Arak?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item H, Reports to Council. Um, tonight we'll be receiving a report regarding the receipt and use of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. It looks like we have Rebecca Mendenhall tonight. I'll take it away. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Tonight, I'll be presenting the report on the funding that has and will be received from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, otherwise known as ARPA funding. So the state and local coronavirus fiscal recovery funds legislation, part of the ARPA, was signed into law by President Biden on March 11th, 2021. The bill includes $350 billion in funds allocated to recovering from the COVID-19 pandemic and restoring the economy. This includes $195.3 billion to all 50 states and the District of Columbia, $65.1 billion to counties, $45.6 billion to metropolitan cities, and $19.5 billion to non-entitlement units of government. The United States Treasury will oversee and administer the payments to the state of California for the non-entitlement cities, those that have a population of less than $50,000, or 50,000 people, which includes the city of San Carlos. So the city received $3.6 million from the state of California on July 13th, 2021, which represents 50% of the city's total ARPA allocation. The second installment, or tranche, is expected to be received at the end of July this year. All funds must be obligated by December 2024. In May of 2021, the Treasury published the interim final rule describing eligible and ineligible uses of funds. As governments began to deploy this funding in their community, the Treasury carefully considered the feedback provided through its public comment process and other forums. The Treasury received over 1,500 comments, partnered in hundreds of meetings, and received correspondence from a wide range of governments and other stakeholders. And as a result, last Thursday, the Treasury issued the final rule, which is a 400-plus-page document, which does take effect on April 1st, 2022. So the final rule delivers some broader flexibility and greater simplicity in the program. However, until that time, the interim final rule remains in effect. So staff is reviewing the new document and will provide updates as they are applicable. In fact, there's a webinar this Wednesday that covers more of the details than we will all be attending. So that being said, both the interim and the final rule allow for the following eligible uses of funds. The supportive of public health response to the COVID-19 emergency by funding COVID-19 mitigation and prevention activities. It addresses negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, including to households, small businesses, and impacted industries. It replaces lost public sector revenue with broad latitude for using this funding for provision of government services to the extent of the reduction of revenue experienced on such, on items such as infrastructure maintenance or pay-go infrastructure projects. It provides for premium pay for essential workers, offering support to those who've born and will bear the greatest health risks. And finally, it allows for investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, making necessary improved investments to improve access to clean water, support vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, and to expand access for broadband services for unserved or underserved households or businesses. Ineligible uses include deposits in pension funds, debt Ineligible uses include deposits in pension funds, debt service, matching funds, legal settlements or judgments, deposit to rainy day funds or general reserves, spending to offset tax cuts, or general infrastructure spending unless done under the revenue loss provision, which is allowable. So although there's no formal action being taken tonight, staff has recommended the following uses of the first tranche of ARPA funding totaling 3.6 million. The first would be to support the response to the COVID-19 emergency. The fiscal year 2021-22 budget includes $250,000 of anticipated expenditures for COVID mitigation and prevention. This covers a broad range of services, including enforcement of public health orders, public communication efforts, purchases of personal protective equipment, ventilation improvements, and other public health responses. Therefore, it's recommended that $19,235 of this first tranche be used against this existing appropriation, as this was the amount of money that we've spent so far from March 3rd, 2021 through the end of November 2021. And it was spent on safety supplies, equipment, as well as some deep cleaning when needed. The second is to address negative impacts on household and individuals. On November 8th, 2021, the city council approved resolution 2021-115 to provide additional funding to the tenant assistance program administered by Samaritan House. It's recommended that $151,000 of the first tranche be used on this appropriation. And finally, the last section would be on the replacement of lost revenue. So based on the Treasury's interim rules and guidance, the staff calculated the city's revenue loss in the amount of $3,799,227, or a little more than the first tranche we received. This calculation may be modified under the final rule, but either way, the guidelines allow broad latitude for using the replacement of lost revenue for the provision of government services. And government services can include, but are not limited to, maintenance or pay-go funded building of infrastructure, including roads, modernization of cybersecurity, hardware, software, and protection of critical infrastructure, health services, environmental remediation, and the provision of police, fire, and other public safety services. Therefore, it's recommended that this full amount be applied toward our project C9823, which is the fire station 16 replacement. The second tranche of funding is expected to be received at the end of July, and this funding could be used in the following ways. Further investments toward our COVID-19 mitigation and prevention, further assistance to address the negative impacts to households, assistance to small businesses and nonprofits, which could include loans or grants, and investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Based on the interim final role and the final role, this could include water conservation, efficiency or reuse measures, development and implementation of a conservation and management plan under the Clean Water Act, and management and treatment of stormwater. So as I mentioned earlier, we're currently reading through the 400-plus pages of the final rule. And we'll use all of our resources, including the webinar later this week, to ensure that we propose allowable projects. And those projects, we discuss more as part of the budget process. So that completes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rebecca. That was a great presentation. We'll continue to follow our typical pattern where we'll ask questions of staff, two or three questions, please. Then we'll do public comment and then any discussion from council members. So at this point, do any of my colleagues have questions for Rebecca and her team? Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Rebecca, for the presentation. Very clear. I appreciate that. To the best of your ability, can you tell us like how certain these requirements are that the federal government is putting out with respect to how the dollars can be spent? Is it still evolving or do you have a pretty clear picture at this point as to how these funds can be appropriated? Thank you so much.
Well, it is still evolving. They just issued the final role last week. And I know as we get closer to our first reporting deadline, April 30th, they're going to be issuing more information on how to report the information in. So it's kind of evolving and that's why I'm hoping to get more information on these webinars this week with guidance from the National League of Cities as well as the California League of Cities.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Dugan, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Rebecca, for the overview. And yeah, I know it's been a bit of a challenge to run down how we can use these funds. So, you know, and we should be grateful that our shortfalls in this challenging time will be completely filled in and then some. So that is fortunate for entities like San Carlos and elsewhere. The, my question is, so when, if we, this first tranche, if we use most of that as replacement of lost revenue, that basically means it goes into our general fund and then we can then make use of it in the same way we could make use of any other proceeds in our general fund, correct?
Yes, it gives you broad latitude, so it would free up funding that we have set aside. So what we were talking about is using the funding that had been set us, or using the lost revenue reimbursement toward paying for the fire station.
Okay, but if, you know, as this ongoing crisis continues and sorry to hear that it's impacted our mayor so directly and I'm glad you're on the mend and feeling well enough for the meeting, Madam Mayor. It's not a trivial thing, so thank you. But we'd certainly be free to, if we allocate that as lost revenue back into our general fund, we would be free to tap that to then do more direct mitigation against COVID directly as well, right?
Yes, and there's certain provisions where you can use the funding directly for COVID prevention and mitigation measures as well.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Rebecca. A very good presentation. Couple of questions. I don't know if you said it, but it just mentions the second tranche is going to come in July, but we don't have an idea how much that would be at this point.
It would be the other 50%, so 3.6 million.
Oh, it would just be another 3.6?
Correct. We received the first 50% this, in 2021, the second 50% comes in 2022.
All right, so about 7.2 altogether. And I noticed that this didn't directly mention, it said that we could invest the, some of them are funds in water, sewer, broadband. Obviously, what was not mentioned there was roads and it looks like it cannot be used directly for that. But as John said, I guess if we're replacing money in the general fund, if we wanted to allocate that money that came back to the general fund for additional road resurfacing, road repair, or adding to that budget, would we be able to do that?
Yes, because you'd be taking the money and applying it toward the, like say for instance, to the fire station, which would free up money that then you can use to pay for roads or street resurfacing.
Right. Okay. Thanks very much. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Collins. Vice Mayor Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rebecca, just to thank you for the presentation. I love the succinctness and the clarity on it. Can you just, so when we talk about the use of some of the funds, so I'm just thinking, for example, there's sort of been this shortfall on and challenges around testing, and I know that, you know, the county's picking up on some of that, but if the city decided to do that, could that be used for the general community as well in terms of a public safety and COVID mitigation, or to have to be more directly for city staff, as an example?
My understanding is it could be used for the general community as well. I mean, that's one of the things that we're trying to get more clarification on. Is, you know, had, have things changed from the interim final role to the final role? You know, kind of, you know, they issued this just late last week, so we're playing.
Okay, no, that's helpful. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All of my questions have been answered. It sounds like we're going to have a lot to discuss during budget time and Rebecca, my hat is off to you and your team. This is another example of just how much extra work you guys are all taking on right now and it's deeply appreciated. So thank you for keeping us updated.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on now to public hearing, item nine. Oh, no, no, we won't. Sorry. We need to open up public comment. Crystal, is there anyone who would like to comment on this item?
Thank you. No, there are no hands.
Okay, great. Any further discussion on this item among my colleagues? Okay, seeing none. Now we can move on. Oh, councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, sorry, Madam Mayor, I was a little slow with my hand. Yeah, just a quick comment. You know, I appreciate that there are ways we can backfill our general fund and maybe even get our firehouse paid for. Terrific, you know, I think in the budget process, we'll certainly, you know, have a robust discussion around these topics. I do just want to say that, you know, if there are still impacts in our community that that we want to more directly address. Or, you know, in any event, I want to make sure we don't immediately allocate all of this. We have plenty of time to be deliberate and to think about it. And I want to make sure we're firmly on the other side of this pandemic as a community before we have fully allocated these funds elsewhere. It's, you know, still a very serious event taking place and there are still our broad impacts in our community that I'm not sure we fully addressed. So I do just want to pause and recognize the spirit of this legislation was to allow us as municipality to directly help people as we see fit at our level of government. And I just want to make sure we stay mindful of that and that we leave these funds unallocated or at least available within our general fund long enough to continue to address the needs of our community. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, councilmember Dugan. I don't see any other hands raised. So now I will move on to item nine A, public hearing. Consideration of adopting an urgency ordinance pursuant to Government Code Section 65858B to impose interim regulations and objective standards for the subdivision and development of qualified Senate Bill Nine properties. And tonight we have Al and Sojudy, I believe, presenting.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. We're bringing this urgency ordinance forward to you in response to SB nine being active as of January 1st of this year. And a number of cities throughout our region have either enacted an ordinance or developing an ordinance or are considering doing that. And to stay out in front of the provisions of this bill, the Housing Subcommittee of the Council recommended that we bring this forward to you at the first meeting of this new year. The goal of the ordinance is to enact some standards to head off potentially negative impacts to our single-family residential neighborhoods and the of those neighborhoods. And it's also would allow the ability for staff to prepare a permanent ordinance and to obtain more community input prior to setting something more permanent in place. With regard to affordable housing, many of you know that we're in the midst of our general plan housing element update and we made progress on that project with the community. And we believe that we will be able to reach our RIN numbers without SB nine. And for instance, we currently allow for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in our community today. And the city council passed an ordinance for accessory dwelling units just about in the last year. And so you could have theoretically up to three units on your property already. In addition to that, when we think about ADUs and junior ADUs, these are considered affordable housing because of the folks that these cater to. And so just wanted to give a little bit of an overview with regard to how this relates to affordable housing. And of course, we can discuss this further following the presentation. But tonight we'll go over the details of SB nine and the staff recommendations. And as a side note, if it's okay with you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to moderate the questions as they come from the city council to the appropriate city staff. And with that, I will introduce Sojudy Hawke, our senior management analyst, and she'll be providing you with the presentation. Sojudy?
Great. Thank you, Al. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, and fellow community members. My name is Sojudy and I'll be doing the presentation on SB nine urgency ordinance. So before moving on to the SB nine legislation overview, we wanted to start off with why we need an urgency ordinance, which Al, you know, gave an overview of, but SB nine, it could really alter the longstanding character of single-family zone neighborhoods throughout California, including San Carlos, by allowing the subdivision of single-family parcels and the development of two primary units on one single-family parcel, all under ministerial approval, meaning no RDRC, Planning Commission, or City Council review of SB nine projects. So without an urgency ordinance, SB nine projects could be developed in an orderly fashion or may even lead to multiple interpretations of the state law, both between applicants and staff. By adopting an urgency ordinance, the city would still meet the state law requirements, but really get the time to engage with the community and the Planning Commission to get guidance on developing the permanent ordinance. It would also allow staff time to analyze the impacts on the zoning ordinance and update it accordingly. So in short, the urgency ordinance would establish interim standards for qualifying SB nine properties, providing the city with clear and measured regulations for how such development can occur, while maintaining consistency with state law. In the next few slides, I'll be going over the main components of SB nine. So what is SB nine? Essentially, there are three components to SB nine. The first is the two-unit development, which we will refer to as the no subdivision, where an applicant can build two homes on a single-family zone parcel. The second component is the urban lot split, where an applicant can subdivide a single-family residential lot into two lots. It's called urban because the legislation requires that only lots in urban areas or urban clusters can qualify, which most lots in San Carlos fall under. The last component is the extension of the subdivision map from 12 to 24 months. So the urgency ordinance will really focus on the first two components to impose interim regulations and objective standards for lots that are both subdivided and not subdivided. The state law supersedes certain city regulations on subdivisions and development standards, but it does allow the local agency to apply objective zoning, subdivision, and design review standards. It is important to note that these standards may only apply if the applicant opts into an SB nine qualified project, which then triggers the ministerial review process, again, which means no PC, no RDRC, or City Council review. This law took effect on January 1st of 2022. So which areas will SB nine impact? As you can see on the city's land use map, the yellow indicates the RS six and RS three districts, indicating that 60% of the land use area may be impacted by SB nine. Also, according to data from the Turner Center for Housing Legislation at UC Berkeley, a report they released in July of 2021 listed that out of the 8,100 total single-family parcels, 6,400 will be considered SB nine eligible parcels. And eligibility really depends on a variety of factors, including parcel size, existing units per parcel, tenancy-based eligibility requirements, and certain location criteria. Now, this slide, this slide highlights that certain lots are actually ineligible for SB nine projects, including parcels in historic districts, wetlands, hundred-year floodplain, high fire hazard severity zone, hazardous waste sites, and delineated earthquake zones. Additionally, SB nine projects cannot alter or demolish deed-restricted affordable housing, rent-controlled housing, or tenant-occupied housing in the past three years. So these criteria apply to both the non-subdivided and the subdivided lots. To qualify for ministerial approval, SB nine projects under the no subdivision category must meet certain development standards, such as allowing at least two units, at least two units that are 800 square feet. No setbacks have constructed in the same location to the same dimension as an existing structure. And in other circumstances, four-foot side and rear-year setbacks. ADUs and JDUs are allowed in this scenario. No short-term rentals, meaning no rentals for less than 30 days. ADUs and JDUs are allowed in this scenario. No short-term rentals, meaning no rentals for less than thirty days. And finally, uh, must provide at least one parking space per new SB nine unit, except no parking is required for projects that are within a half-mile walking distance of a transit corridor or major transit stop or within one block of a car-share program. In addition to the development standards from the previous slide, also shown in gray here, subdivided projects under SB nine must also meet certain development standards to qualify for ministerial approval, such as each resulting parcel after the subdivision must be at least forty percent of the original parcel size. Each resulting parcel must be at least twelve hundred square feet. No sequential lot splits either on the same lot or adjacent lots. Requires an affidavit that an applicant intends to use one of the housing units as a principal residence, so some owner occupancy requirements there for at least three years from date of approval. And after lot splits, the city can restrict to two units per lot and allow the applicant to select the combination of two units, which may or may not include ADUs and JDUs. So in the next few slides, we'll show some graphics to kind of, um, help make sense of these standards. So what can be built under the current state law without SB nine? As Al said, a total of three housing units are allowed currently, which includes one primary unit, one ADU, and one JDU, as seen on, as seen on the graphic. Uh, and currently, a second primary dwelling unit is not allowed within RS six and conditionally allowed in RS three. Throughout these next slides with the graphics, you'll notice that the E, you'll see Es and Ns, and the E stands for existing and the N stands for new. So what changes with SB nine? Under the non-subdivision category, one existing or one new primary dwelling unit or two new primary dwelling units are allowed, along with one ADU and one JDU, for a total of four housing units, as shown on this graphic. Again, this is for the non-SB nine subdivision. Now, these two graphics show the build-out scenario without SB nine on the left and with SB nine on the right on a five-thousand-square-feet lot. So under the current ordinance, a total of three housing units are allowed, including a primary unit, an ADU, and a JDU, which is three thousand eight hundred square feet. Now with SB nine, a total of four units are allowed, including two primary units, an ADU, and a JDU, which is, sorry, with SB nine, so a total of four units with two primary units, an ADU and a JDU for a total of four thousand six hundred square feet on a five-thousand-square-feet lot. So this is this graphic right here. Also, it's important to note that local agencies have no discretion on limiting the total number of units to anything under four units under the no subdivision scenario. It's also important to highlight that SB nine provisions supersede certain FAR standards, so floor area standards for single-family residential review. In fact, San Carlos passed new single-family residential requirements after our community expressed interest in limiting the bulk and mass of new developments. And now SB nine projects may allow more floor area. Just something to consider. So what changes under the subdivision category? The legislation allows to split or subdivide lots within, uh, certain requirements without a discretionary review. So what does this mean? The lot subdivision may result anywhere between two to four units per resulting lot. The graphic on the left shows two-unit-per-resulting-lot scenario with two primary units on each lot. That's this graphic here. The graphic on the right shows four-units-per-resulting-lot scenario with two primary units on each lot, plus an ADU and a JDU. Please note that this scenario on the right can only happen if the city allows more than two units per resulting lot. The current state law gives the city the authority to limit to only two units per lot and lets the city decide whether they want the applicant to choose the combination of two units to include ADUs and JDUs. However, it is staff recommendation to go with the scenario on the left and limit to two total units per resulting lot with no ADUs or JDUs allowed. We'll discuss this further as we dive into the key points of the urgency ordinance. So as discussed at the beginning of the presentation, on December twenty-second of last year, staff met with the Housing Subcommittee to discuss the implications of SB nine. And it was recommended to move forward with an urgency ordinance. The purpose of the urgency ordinance is to impose interim regulations and objective standards for the subdivision and the development of qualified SB nine properties. Now, this is necessary because SB nine poses a current and immediate threat to the public peace, health, welfare, and safety of the city's single-family neighborhoods. Other neighboring cities have already implemented or are in the process of implementing urgency ordinances, including Palo Alto, Cupertino, Los Altos Hills, and San Jose. Finally, as stated earlier, an urgency ordinance really gives the city time to prepare a permanent ordinance to help manage parking, privacy, scale, and development intensity of the new SB nine-related development on single-family lots. And it'll really give us time to engage with the public and prepare information and recommendations for review by the Planning Commission and City Council. Now that we have a general understanding of why we need an urgent urgency ordinance, the next two slides will go over the key points embedded within the ordinance. So a maximum of four units will be allowed per, uh, per lot. And so this is related to the non-subdivision category. And this will include, um, two primary units and an ADU and a JDU. Also, the maximum size of any new SB nine unit will be limited to eight hundred square feet, including the garage. Basements will not be permitted. The minimum front setback for any new SB nine dwelling unit shall be the same as the underlying zoning and otherwise four, four feet from the interior side and rear parcel lines. The maximum height, sixteen feet, and then twenty feet for properties in the hillside overlay district. One uncovered parking space will be required for every new SB nine unit. And no parking will be required when the parcel is located within a half-mile of walking distance of either a high-quality transit corridor, major stop, or within a car-share program. And no dwelling unit shall be rented for a period of less than thirty days and cannot be occupied for short-term rental. And, and, and an SB dwelling unit may be rented separately from the primary dwelling unit. Now, moving on, the key points for the SB nine subdivided parcels, the following standards will apply. So after the subdivision, a maximum of two units per resulting lot with no ADUs and JDUs allowed. And the size will be limited to eight hundred square feet for all new SB nine units. The rest of these standards are similar to the ones from the previous slide, including four feet interior side and rear setback, sixteen feet max height, one new parking space, with the same exceptions, no short-term rentals. And SB nine units are allowed to be rented separately from the primary unit. Now, it's the owner occupancy requirement, which is the new one here, where if the proposed dwelling units are developed subsequent to a subdivision, the owner will be required to sign and record an affidavit placing a covenant that will run with the parcel to confirm that the owner intends to live in neither the primary dwelling unit or an SB nine unit on the parcel for at least three years from the issuance of an SB nine dwelling unit certificate of occupancy. Now, the next two slides show what the neighboring cities are doing in terms of implementing SB nine. As you can see, Burlingame adopted a standard ordinance, whereas Palo Alto and Cooper, and Cupertino adopted urgency ordinances. Burlingame and Cupertino are not allowing ADUs and JDUs, and Palo Alto is also not allowing ADUs and JDUs, but under certain provisions. All three cities adopted objective standards, as we discussed in the last two slides. Moving on to three more cities, this matrix shows that Los Altos Hills and San Jose adopted urgency ordinance, whereas Mill Valley adopted a standard ordinance. All three cities are not allowing ADUs and JDUs. It's important to note that all six cities, including the ones from the previous slide, are limiting to two units max per lot after subdivision, which aligns with, uh, with the staff recommendation. So staff recommends adopting the urgency ordinance, imposing interim regulations and objective standards for the subdivision and development of qualified SB nine properties. Alternatively, council can choose not to adopt the urgency ordinance, which in this case, the state law would apply until a permanent local ordinance is in place, or council can provide staff with alternative direction. Now, if the council were to move forward with adopting an urgency ordinance, staff would come back on February fourteenth for an extension request. Now, while the urgency ordinance is in place, staff would organize Planning Commission and City Council study sessions and start to prepare, um, the development of a permanent ordinance. Now, the permanent ordinance may consider things like max units allowed after subdivision, max height, and other, and perhaps even affordability requirements, along with any other issues or concern we gather from the community outreach process. This last slide shows the urgency adoption motion in full. And with that, I'll end the presentation. Staff, including Al, Andrea, Lisa, Rucha, and I, all from the, um, from the Community Development Department, are available for any questions council may have, and Al will be moderating the questions portion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sojuti. Um, that was a wonderful presentation, distilling a lot of really complex information. Um, I'm wondering, before we start council questions with Al's moderation, um, if our Housing Subcommittee members would like to maybe briefly talk about, um, their process. I know that you guys had a first look at, at this, um, these plans, so that would be Ron or John. Um, just opening that up as an option, if either of you would like to share your brief thoughts. Ron, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so we, we did meet, I had, uh, a number of questions, many of which were answered, but at the, at the time, I, I, we hadn't seen the detail that we saw tonight, which was, um, which was fabulous. I, I really enjoy it. I, I would, I would say that I think that staff has done, uh, an outstanding job, and they have, they've really condensed what is really a fairly complex bill. And so, uh, and they conveyed that, uh, to us on, when we met in the Subcommittee meeting. And after seeing all the recommendations, I know that people will have their, their, there, everyone will have their own questions, but, I'm generally in support of it. Uh, I, I think that obviously comments may be made by my fellow council members and possibly the public that may change my mind, but, uh, I, I'm generally happy with what staff put together. I'm generally supportive. You know, obviously, we're gonna have some differing opinions about how we might want to craft this further. But, um, I'm really looking forward to a further discussion of it, because I think that, uh, we've really got a good foundation here, and that's something that I believe we should do, uh, very quickly.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Collins. Uh, Councilmember Dugan, do you have a few short thoughts to share with us at the beginning of our discussion? We'll, we'll dive deeper later on in the, in the discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I would just say that, um, this is a big, uh, complicated issue that does have, uh, the potential of very significant impact on many of our neighborhoods. And, and that is why I'm supportive of an emergency ordinance here, mostly so that, um, we have time to, you know, the, the enactment of SB nine, maybe we could have, I applaud Mill Valley. I'm not sure quite how they got to a full ordinance already. Uh, we had a pretty busy fall, and I'll just say, I, I support the emergency ordinance, principally so we can, uh, take the time, have the community outreach, make sure we're getting thorough input, and, uh, really be deliberate here, because this is a, uh, a significant impact, uh, potentially on, on San Carlos. And we need to be thoughtful and deliberate and, uh, really understand, uh, what we're doing here. And so that's why I, I support the ordinance tonight, um, so that we can be very thoughtful and deliberate and get this right, um, this spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Okay, I'll open it up to questions. Vice Mayor Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and to Judy and Al, thanks for the, the presentation, and, uh, I believe it was well done and, gave a lot of clarity to the issue. I just had a quick question around the, the differences when we start looking at, if someone were to just leverage the AD, current ADU law that's in place versus SB nine on some of the, let's say, the height restrictions and other things. So I, I don't remember, and I apologize, I don't remember exactly where we were on height restrictions for S, for the ADU locks. I know you can go above a garage, and there's more flexibility around that. Can you just, so, so if someone from the public said, gosh, I was thinking about doing something, they might have more, you know, there, there's options that they might have. And can you just clarify what the two different options are around those two, the two between the ADU law and SB nine? For, either for a lot split or just for, uh, on existing property?
Andrea Marvasic, our principal planner, and perhaps Rucha?
Thank you, Al. Um, thank you, Vice Mayor Rack. You're correct in that the eight, the current ADU law is, I would say, more generous in terms of what can be built than SB nine, uh, specifically for ADUs. ADUs are limited in, in certain cases to sixteen feet in height in order to be considered a state-exempt ADU and get some, um, extra consideration in terms of setbacks, for example. However, as you mentioned, they are also able to, uh, be constructed above garages. And one big difference on that an SB nine unit would not be able to, to do that ADUs can is that if an ADU meets current setbacks for a house, um, so for example, a nine-foot second-story setback, we actually allow ADUs on the second floor. Uh, under this proposal, uh, we are recommending limiting the height of an SB nine unit to sixteen feet, which would in effect limit any second-story SB nine units, um, from being constructed. So I would say that's, that's the big, um, difference. The other, the other difference is under our ADU law, you can actually build a bigger unit. Um, if you have the floor area, you could build up to a thousand square feet for a two-bedroom, uh, ADU, whereas an SB nine unit would be limited to eight hundred square feet regardless of number of bedrooms.
That's helpful. So in, in some cases, just sticking with the, if, if someone wanted to look at this, sticking with the current ADU rules, that might be, uh, more favorable to them.
Correct. I think that SB nine, um, regulations are really giving you that fourth unit. If you're not subdividing, that's really what you're gaining under SB nine is the fourth unit. Um, but if you're just comparing, for example, um, under a subdivision, two units max, generally speaking, just building an ADU is going to be more beneficial under our current regulations instead of invoking an SB nine, um, regulation.
Thank you very much. That's super helpful. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just had a couple, uh, at least for now. On that thirty-day rental thing, it still seems kind of short to me. Are, are we, are we allowed to require more than a thirty-day round? Could we make it sixty? Could we make it ninety?
Okay, um, Andrea, do you know the answer to that question?
I actually don't. I am looking through the law right now, so I will see what I can find.
All right. It just seems to me that thirty days is, I don't know, it's just too short. I think you could have a revolving door of renters. So if we could, if we could legally require, uh, a longer rental period, maybe like a, a minimum of a three-month lease or a six-month lease, I, I'd be interested to know how popular that would be and what the, you know, what everybody else's thoughts are on that. The other thing is, um, on the eight hundred square feet. So that's, that's the minimum, and we're okay with making that the maximum as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. And it, it seems to me that, I, I know that some people would probably argue that that's not very big. And but if we did limit it to eight hundred square feet, does that not then make it, or help make it more affordable as a rental? I mean, is that, is that an argument we can make?
Yes, uh, Councilmember, in general, um, that would allow for a small, either a, or a large studio or a small two-bedroom, one-bath unit. Um, if it didn't require any, any parking, that further adds to the usable square footage inside the unit. And it's pretty comfortable.
But it sounds like with a unit like that, though, they would have to provide at least some on-property parking, correct?
Well, if it's within half a mile of a transit station, like the, the train station or bus, they don't have to.
Oh, that's right. So if it's beyond a half a mile?
Then we are saying that they should provide at least one parking space.
Okay. I forgot about that part. Okay. Okay, I forgot about that part. Okay, that's it for now for me.
And through the chair, uh just to answer your questions, Councilmember Collins, uh the state law does specifically reference thirty days.
Okay.
Yes.
Don't worry about those.
Yeah, Councilmember Collins, the the thirty days in SB nine is designed to prevent. You know, online overnight rentals and and turn it into a an Airbnb or a BRBO. Um and there's some practical issues with um requiring a longer-term lease because typically when you have a lease um for a. The market usually dictates a one-year lease, but after the one-year lease, um having a minimum time, we would we would we'd be. Having to police what happens at the end of the lease term. Is it going to turn into a thirty day after that? Or are we going to require another one-year lease? Which is not really how the rental market um works. Typically, it's a one-year lease to get a commitment from the tenant. The landlord likes the assurance that they're going to be getting rent for that first year. And then after that, it's typically month-to-month.
Yeah, whi- which I actually have no problem with. I mean, I'm involved in a lease, a business lease right now that is exactly that. So I have a six-month lease, a month-to-month after that. So I don't have any problem with thirty days if it's following a um a a lease to begin with. But I I guess what you're saying, though, is that we can't require a lease before we have a thirty-day rental. Uh requirement.
Well, I well, I think that the answer might be more complicated than that, but for purposes of the urgency ordinance, we're recommending that you um. Adopt what we proposed, but that's certainly something we could study for the for the longer term.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um so Judy, thank you so much for the presentation and um very clear. Um would you mind, um if we could just go back to the timeline slide again? I I just want to make sure I understand the intention um and the shot clocks we have. And um when you get there, I want to ask a question.
I believe Crystal, you're controlling us if you want to go back. Thank you. The timeline. Which.
I thought it was towards the end of the presentation, um where you talked about the forty-five-day period. And public input.
Oh, of of like the next steps?
Yes.
There'll be um recommendations and then next steps. And then is it, is it this one?
Uh yes, I think so. So could you could you talk to us, what happens in the period uh between now and February fourteenth? Um and you talked about um uh stu- additional study sessions. And there were some comments somewhere in the in the deck with respect to community input. So could you walk me through? And what those milestone markers are and the timing as it relates to this February fourteenth date? Thank you.
Sure. Um Andrea, do you want to tackle that of like how the ordinance extension is related to to the next step?
Absolutely. Um so to begin with, if adopted tonight, the urgency ordinance uh would be in effect for forty-five days. Um and it automatically would expire at that time unless the council chose to do the extension on February fourteenth. Separate from that date and the urgency ordinance extension. Um and as part of the permanent ordinance work, we would want to do the planning commission and city council study sessions. So the intent is to do those study sessions after receiving feedback on council of any items they'd like us to study and address. As well as an opportunity to get public input. Uh that would be for the permanent ordinance, not for the extension on February fourteenth. If that, I think, answers what what you were um asking about timeline. So that that second bullet probably should go under the prepare permanent ordinance.
Okay, so so what you're what you're suggesting then is is that there'd be planning commission and city council study sessions. Then a potential for extending the ordinance on the fourteenth of February. And then after that, uh some additional uh community-based inputs to prepare the permanent ordinance. Is that the sequence? Am I understanding correctly?
So the sequence would be, uh there would not be any study sessions before February fourteen. It would just be an extension of the the ordinance tonight, as well as if there's any feedback we get tonight. Of information the council would like to see as part of that extension presentation. Um so once extended on the fourteenth and we get this longer period of time to prepare the permanent ordinance. As part of that, we would do the uh study sessions for both planning commission and city council, as well as public outreach uh and and gathering input. So this would all occur if the uh ordinance is extended on the fourteenth, the emergency ordinance.
Okay, got it. All right. And then and that, sorry to be pedantic here, but does any, does staff do any work on this between now and the fourteenth or? That would all start afterward?
We would definitely uh try to get um some work done. We would we would have. Uh you know, information from our other cities about things maybe that they've done, some practices that they've come across. Um as well as anything that uh council would like us to look into and bring back on the fourteenth. Um so if there's anything, you know, that you would, you think should um have additional review or research, we can look into that and bring it back. And it could be changed as part of the ordinance extension. Uh we're just anticipating that the actual. Um heavy lifting of the permanent ordinance would occur after that. Um and then we would also at the ordinance extension uh hearing, present to council what's occurred between, you know, this evening and bringing it back to your order fourteen.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer Lohan. Uh Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I just had a quick question that I I hadn't really gotten a chance to think through yet. These new requirements, I think, you know, regardless, we're going to be in in this new uh realm of. Figuring out and, you know, uh in enforcing these new requirements like um. Uh uh tenant occupancy in the last three years, is this truly still occupied by the owner? Um and uh enforcing the no short-term rental on these. And I'm just curious, question to staff. Um these new requirements, how burdensome do we think those are? Do we have any kind of ongoing monitoring like that of any? You know, from any of our other ordinances? I mean, or is this kind of like something brand new that we're going to have to get our head around as a city? Um, you know, uh monitoring a development to see if it's still uh being occupied by the owner. And is that something we think we'll be active in? Or is that something we'll kind of, it'll be in our ordinance? And if the neighbors complain, we'll 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 go take a look. Um have have we thought through what what that's going to mean? And is that going to, you know, are we going to have new staffing requirements uh because of this?
Uh thank you, Councilmember. You know, we haven't given it a a whole lot of thought yet. Um but you bring up a really good point that um when you're talking about. Monitoring, you know, who lives in a unit and things like that, um it's very difficult for cities to do that. It's much like a homeowners association, you know, that how do you find out when something, somebody does something? In a in an HOA, it's it's very similar to that. And and it wouldn't be like we would have an officer. Code enforcement officer going and knocking on doors and things like that. Um many of the things we do uh from a municipal standpoint is done by complaints. Like a neighbor will notice something and and say, well, hey, I don't, the same people aren't living there. Hey, could you take a look at this? So we haven't really given it in ter- a lot of thought in terms of the the mechanics of how this would would work, but um. It is, it is more. It's going to be more administrative functions and uh permitting functions and and. But uh once you start getting into, you know, who lives in a unit and. Um now there could be legal issues. There, we're requiring an affidavit for somebody. Uh to say that they're going to indeed, you know, live there for three years. So if they do get caught and they're not doing that. Um there could be some uh an issue there for the for the uh owner. So. We'll we'll give it some more thought and when we come back with with the uh more permanent ordinance, we'll have more information for you at that time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. I don't see any other hands raised. I had two very quick questions, um Al, for you and your team. And it's actually um has to do with the Association of Bay Area Governments memo that was included in our packet. Um and it notes that uh there was an expectation that the state's housing and community development. Um would issue some technical assistance, a technical assistance memo, and I'm wondering if that has come down from the state yet.
Andrea, have you seen that? I certainly haven't.
I have not either. Um we're lucky to also participate in our twenty-one elements group. And so uh my my guess is that we would hear from them um once that comes down and and we would discuss with our neighboring cities as well. But I have not seen anything.
Hmm Andrea, just to add to that, it's very different from the ADU ordinances where HCD was very active. And they give out handbooks and guidances and checked our ordinances. This is kind of like a different beast where they're not. Um HCD is not um giving us any guidelines. And so different jurisdictions are interpreting it in in ways that works best for their cities. Or regionally. So we've been monitoring other cities and using twenty-one elements as a resource and we'll definitely keep an eye out for HCD.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. Um and then my second question um is um there's this Q and A in that same. Association of Bay Area Governments uh memo, and it notes that maybe there's an unintended consequence of um. Uh duplex entitlements allowing um people to build single-unit monster homes. And get around um our single-family design guidelines. Um I assume that's something that staff will hopefully. Um look into as as you dig deeper into this issue, just to make sure that the unintended consequences of this legislation are are dealt with as well.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Um all right, uh any other questions from my colleagues? Okay, seeing none, I'll open up the public comment. This is a public hearing. Crystal, do you see any hands raised? Yes, I do. Give me one sec. I'm trying to. Um yes, the first hand we have up is David Crabbe. Uh you'll be followed by David Tusman.
Uh good evening again, members of the council and Madam Mayor. Uh I have uh like to actually ask a question. And depending on the answer to the question, I might have a comment. Uh the uh and the the two uh versions of the. The subdivision or non-subdivision and so on, where uh uh in relation to ADUs. Like ADUs, the uh ADUs have to be rented. But in these other subdivisions that we're talking about, can those units be sold or do they have to be rented? Uh that would be an, or if there's a difference between the version one and version two. Uh I wish the staff could uh help me out on that before we go any further.
Um how do we typically proceed? Do we respond um in this case, Jeff? Um before Mr. Crabbe proceeds? What it was the typical response during a public hearing?
Um if the council wishes us to respond, we're happy to do that.
Okay, Al, is there a a quick response to Mr. Crabbe's question?
Um Andrea, do you know the answer to that question?
Uh yes, so there is the opportunity um to sell them separately, which would be the subdivision um path. Under SB nine.
Hmm. The legislation is silent on requiring agencies to to sell SB nine units, so we don't have to. But if we were to allow it, it would uh be for the SB nine subdivision projects and would need to meet the SB nine subdivision development standards.
Thank you, Steph. Mr. Crabbe, did you want to continue with the rest of your minute and a half?
Uh yes, please. Uh yeah, uh the reason I asked the question is that um. In terms of the acceptance of a neighborhood, maybe even the city in general, there may be a more of a tendency or a. Preference, at least for the neighbors, uh that if the units are going to be uh purchased by someone, that someone's going to live in a unit that they own versus a rental. Uh and so I just thought that could turn out to be a an issue. Uh I'm not making it an issue myself, but it it. It's an interesting uh thought because I I thought that the uh one of the advantages of SB nine was that you potentially sell the units. Uh as opposed to having to rent them, and that is opposed to like an ADU or whatever. Uh so that was that was my concern on that. Uh otherwise, I'm in favor of your emergency ordinance and I think the presentation was great. And I uh very thankful for Adam for asking the question about ADUs versus SB nine because I thought that was quite interesting that. You may be better off doing AB ADUs than SB nine, and I think that would be really helpful for people to know. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe. Thank you, David. Um next up is David Tusman. You should be able to unmute.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Good evening to the council and staff. Uh thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. My name is David Tusman. I'm a resident of San Carlos. And a member of the Peninsia Young Democrats, who as a club strongly supported this bill SB nine last year and endorsed it wholeheartedly. Please do not support this emergency ordinance. It will hamper our ability to address the housing crisis, and it is not all justified as an emergency. San Carlos Council and sta- staff are working to update our housing element in order to zone for arena goals. This ordinance will necessarily reduce the number of housing units that can and will be constructed, which goes directly against the hard work that you're doing to increase the housing supply. City staff made the same claim during the East Side Vision Review in September that we can meet our arena floor without considering zoning like this. And said that those calculations would be shared within a few weeks, but here we are months later and we haven't seen any any numbers. One item is that this ordinance has a small allowance of eight hundred square feet, which for the new unit, which is made even smaller by including the garage spaces. That floor area. But from the city code, as I can read it, it doesn't appear that normally garages are included in the standard floor area calculation. For single-family zones. It's not reasonable and maybe legally tenuous to have a different equation like this to actively penalize SB nine projects. You noted Los Altos Hills, Palo Alto and Cupertino as examples, but those should not be seen as good examples for leading on addressing the housing crisis. And then you list Mill Valley, which is thirty-eight miles away, not a neighboring city. Our actual neighboring city of Redwood City specifically has planned not to restrict SB nine developments. They are an example of a city who is leading in the area of addressing the crisis, similar with the city of San Mateo. I've heard that there are about six homeowners in the community who have contacted city staff with the hopes of using SB nine on their property. I hope they were informed of tonight's meeting that will cause them excessive delay and frustration. I'm also curious what kind of projects they're exploring. And how people can see the realities of what might happen here. I can't tell where my time is. It jumped.
Yeah, I I I agree. Um why don't you take five more seconds to wrap up, Mr. Tusman?
All right, um we already have a thick web of development codes and restrictions that are daunting and expensive for homeowners trying to build on their property. This is a new opportunity for people to do more with their parcel while helping the city with their housing supply. And housing an additional family member or renting on the market for supplemental income, or even selling off a subdivided lot to help them downsize from an enormous home. And get some liquidity from their home, all great opportunities. Finally, I take strong objection and personal offense to the reasoning worded for this emergency ordinance. That it is a current and immediately immediate threat to the public peace, health, welfare and safety of a city's single-family neighborhoods. I I live in a fourplex. I don't see any threat to my public peace and health and welfare by having more homes like mine. Uh so thank you for giving me the time and I urge you to oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, if you'd allow me just a brief second, I want to pull up the presentation. So Judy, if you can go ahead and close on your end. We're having some freezing issues because uh because she's sharing on her side.
No problem. I closed it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so we have four more hands. Karen Tusman, you're up next, followed by Joel Kohn.
Thank you. Um thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Karen Tusman. I am married to David Tusman. Uh we both live in San Carlos. Um we're lucky to live on a nice, quiet residential street in a fourplex surrounded by other multifamily units. Um it is very peaceful. It is very healthy. And uh it's, you know, I I've long felt that more people deserve the opportunity to live. In a situation like mine, uh whereas, you know, it's not a two, it's not a two-million-dollar house, which is kind of the what you're looking at. If you're looking at a detached, single-family home that constitutes R-one zoning. Um but it's a little piece of uh, you know, twelve-hundred square feet, enough room to set up a remote office during the pandemic that we share. Um, at, the pandemic has made everyone, I think, appreciate the, uh, ability to have space in their home. And so, um, I really urge the city to not look at, you know, the, the word threat keeps coming up. And I, I really urge the city to look at this as an opportunity. It's an opportunity to house more people, to meet the arena goals. It's an opportunity for people to make more of their land. Um, it's an opportunity for someone to make a foothold in this city without, when they can't reach a two million dollar, three bedroom, two bathroom, which is the situation we have gotten to in our current housing crisis. Um, you know, like my husband, I take offense at the idea that there's a, a threat to public peace, safety, welfare from, uh, SB nine being enacted as the state intended immediately. And I, I would really, uh, want to know, want to hear a clarification of what exactly the threat is here. What is the threat to safety? Because I remember with AB fourteen eighty-two, when that passed, um, there was a need for an emergency ordinance by the city to prevent landlords from kicking out their tenants. Um, it didn't come fast enough for my building. All of the other tenants, except for us, we, who were month to month, got kicked out. Uh, so I understand, um, what a real threat can look like, uh, and, and it needs for emergency ordinances there, but I don't understand the threat here and I would appreciate an articulation of that threat. I see only opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tusman. Okay, up next is Joel Cohn, followed by Lorene Letterer.
Hi there. Uh, thank you for, uh, taking my call, members of, uh, of the council. Uh, yeah, my name is Joel Cohn. I'm, uh, calling to urge you not to take any sort of urgency orian, uh, ordinance, excuse me, regarding SB nine. I think, um, I think in times like this, a, uh, good acronym to keep in mind is KISS. Keep it simple, stupid, uh, with, with no offense meant to the, um, to the members of the council. Uh, sim- simply put, I think it's a poor idea to try and craft, uh, regulations with the intent of creating some sort of perfect imagined, uh, form of, uh, housing or ADU splits or what, what have you. People are going to build, build on their properties, what they think is, uh, is going to be best suited. And I think frankly, that's probably a good thing, you know? We are living in a, we're living in a situation where housing prices are incredibly expensive. Rents are for many people generally unaffordable. And if people see an opportunity there for them to make use of their own property in such a way that they can help alleviate that, well, you know, benefiting both themselves and their communities, I think that's, I think that's frankly great. I think trying to, you know, restrict them because you want some specific, um, specific thing to happen more often than not is going to not make them do, you know, create serve your, uh, or any sort of idealized version of housing is going to make them not make housing. And, you know, not making housing is what got us into this, uh, situation in the first place. So I would, I would just say, you know, I, I'd hope that you don't undertake this, uh, this ordinance. You know, most of the neighbor, a lot of neighboring towns are not doing that. And ones that are are the ones that are notorious for basically doing everything they can to, uh, stop develop, stop development of, you know, housing for people. And I think that's a bad, a bad thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
Uh, up next is Lorene Letterer, followed by Josh Wallace.
Unmute. Hello, this is Lorene Letterer. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, I have a number of questions and concerns that have not been addressed here and such as the stress on our infrastructure. Um, with quadrupling our population, um, what will be the stress on our clean water facilities? I had the, um, privilege of touring our, uh, the unit out there in Redwoods, in Redwood, um, Redwood Shores with Cameron Johnson, and we were at pretty much max out there. With each of the properties right now paying twenty-two thousand and more dollars into our sewer fee, how is that going to affect having four families living now on a one parcel? Do you, what are the plans to divide the costs of infrastructure? Or are people that are retired that live in their single family home, are their fees going to be jumping quadruple to cover their property because other properties are now being divided and subdivided, et cetera, and placing a larger stress on our infrastructure? So I'd like some discussion on what is the impact on the, um, the schools, our clean water, our, uh, uh, all other infrastructure that we rely on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Josh Wallace, followed by Jordan Grimes.
Hi, my name is Josh Wallace. I live on Magnolia Ave and, uh, I want to thank the council for all their efforts as, as well as the staff, uh, to bring forward this, um, urgency ordinance. I fully support it. Um, I, I want to make sure that, um, you know, my neighbors, myself, um, get to enjoy and maybe their kids as well, enjoy, um, the, uh, the life that we've, uh, come to love in San Carlos. Yes, it's a, a single family street and, um, that's fine. This is my life investment. I want to protect it and, and I want to protect that of my neighbors as well. I don't think that is a crime. I think that is a decision that, that, um, my family made twenty-plus years ago to, um, put down roots in San Carlos and, uh, uh, invest in what is obviously a wonderful city. So I support, um, the, uh, urgency ordinance. And there's a, uh, a complex bill. Uh, thank you very much. I really appreciate, uh, your, your attention to this issue and, um, look forward to, uh, positive outcomes.
Thank you. Um, we have four more hands left. Jordan Grimes, you're up next, followed by Mike Dunham.
Yes. Good evening, Council Honorable Mayor. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a lead member of Housing Advocacy Group Peninsula for Everyone, as well as the political director of the Peninsula Young Democrats, here to express our strong opposition to this motion. It really is deeply disappointing to see this being considered tonight. San Carlos, like so many cities on the peninsula, is woefully out of balance when it comes to jobs and housing created over the last decade. With millions more square feet of biotech office space on the way, the city should be doing everything they can to engender the creation of more housing, not restricting and increasing the regulatory burden on production. Like Mr. Tusman, I was similarly appalled with the assertion that duplexes and multifamily housing present a health and safety concern to single family neighborhoods. That assertion carries extremely ugly class and racial implications and has no place in public decorum. In regard to some of the comments tonight, I do just want to say that the claim that SB nine will quadruple the city's housing stock is just simply incorrect. Um, the Turner Center for Housing at UC Berkeley has estimated that statewide, the, the capacity of SB nine, um, of, of lots in the state would only be around seven hundred thousand units statewide. Um, the ci- cities will simply not see very much housing from, from this measure. Um, what we are talking about is, is really a, um, minor change to neighborhoods. Uh, that said, I'd really encourage the council to set this ordinance aside tonight and really think, um, more on addressing the jobs, housing imbalance in the city, which really does negatively affect us all. Thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, up next is Mike Dunham, followed by Tim Hilborn.
Good evening, Council. My name is Mike Dunham. Uh, I am a lead with Peninsula for Everyone. Uh, and you've heard from a few of our, our members tonight. I also live in Redwood City, so very much the decisions you all make uh, around housing and office development very much impact me because I'm a renter. Uh, and the more our jobs, housing imbalance gets out of balance, the more my rent goes up. Uh, I wanted to just add to the comments, uh, encouraging you not to pass an urgency ordinance. Uh, I think it's, it's pretty clear that the logic for why this is an emergency is pretty specious. Uh, and in addition to the sort of disturbing implications of what's being suggested about your own residents. Uh, I also, you know, I, I like San Carlos. My wife and I go there a lot. We were at Susie Case the other day. Um, it's a great place. Well, what I keep reading about your city is biotech, biotech, biotech. Uh, just scrolling through a couple of the headlines in the Daily Journal, biotech blooms in San Carlos, hotels biotech suggested for San Carlos, San Carlos. Huge biotech complex proposed in San Carlos. San Carlos officials okay biotech and office complex. What I keep hearing when I see that is we need a lot more housing. And the, the thing I'm wondering is whether San Carlos is doing its part to house the workers that you're intentionally bringing into your city. Uh, I think leaving SB nine to be implemented as our legislature legislators intended, uh, would go a long way towards that. Uh, and I think, you know, it, it bears, keep it in mind that every single legislature on the peninsula, from San Francisco to San Jose, voted for this bill. And there's a reason for that because cities are dropping the ball and maintaining a jobs, housing balance that addresses this crisis. I encourage you not to make that problem worse. Please vote against this ordinance. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Tim Hilborn, followed by Roz Sohili.
Hello, um, and thanks for, uh, having this get together, uh, city council members and staff. Um, the first thing I want to say, I'm, I'm Tim Hilborn. I live in greater east San Carlos area. Uh, first thing I'm going to say is please, please, uh, support this as an emergency ordinance right now. If you could make it permanent right now, I'd ask you to do that. Unfortunately, people like the Tusmans and the, and the young Democrats are very misguided by this SB nine, which was written by Tony Atkins and Scott Weiner, um, who are both in the back pockets of massive developers. Um, please keep the sixteen foot height, require a garage for every unit, no matter where it is in the city. Um, and also people have been misguided by this because folks like us, we can't split lots. Banks will not let you split lots and over seventy-five percent of Californians owe over three hundred thousand dollars on their mortgage. They cannot split lots. Find me a bank that can do that. There are predatory lenders out there right now. I have already found three online that will buy your lots and split it and build the house for you for a certain percentage. So you, you know, the people who are going to split lots are going to be international, multi-corporate developers. That's who's going to come into the city. Um, I urge you to please check out livable California and I'm urging, um, the, the, uh, city council to support our neighborhood voices, which is an initiative. We're trying to get on the twenty twenty-two ballot to overthrow SB nine and SB ten and bring back local control. Please, please support that. I am urging you to do that. If you want more information, I'll be happy to send that to you. But unfortunately, this SB nine and SB ten are completely misguided, horribly written bills that need to be overturned. And in the meantime, please pass this emergency ordinance right now and please make what you already have into a permanent ordinance as soon as you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, last hand up that I see is Roz Sohili. You should be able to unmute.
Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Roz and I'm a longtime resident of San Carlos. Um, I believe it's really important for us to consider some of the adverse effects, um, that this can have as it can significantly increase traffic and reduce a lot of our street parking. Um, and my biggest concern is that our suburban towns will begin to look like the greater Los Angeles area where traffic is absolutely unbearable and our cities and towns are overcrowded. Um, as a young person who most likely won't be able to afford a home in the area, of course, I want affordable housing and I think it's an important component. Um, but I really want you to consider, um, upholding the charm of our town and doing what is necessary to make sure that the integrity of San Carlos remains, um, before we, uh, move forward with other affordable housing options. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Roz. Uh, and that was our last speaker.
Okay, great. Thank you, Crystal. Um, I believe at this point, since that's all of the public comments, we will take a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to the close of public hearing.
Second.
Second, okay. Second by Vice Mayor. Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Vice Mayor Rack.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I think I'll move now to discussion and comments from my colleagues. Would anyone like to make some comments? Councilmember Collins?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll, I'll kick it off. First of all, I want to thank everybody who spoke. Uh, this has really been a controversial subject for, for many years. SB nine, uh, went back for revisions and as, as we know, uh, I think it got delayed a couple of times before it came out. Um, I personally was not in favor of it. I thought it was a bad bill. Um, and I believe now that, uh, we may see some unintended consequences that come out of it. But having said that, you know, when I read this, uh, the, the Turner report that we all got and which one of the speakers referred to, it is true that, um, surprisingly, the impact of this bill will be a lot, uh, less, uh, severe than many people thought, simply because there's lots of, there are a lot of lots all over the state. It just can't be split. They're, they're, they're too far away or they're too steep, uh, or they're too small. So there, you know, what remains is this real, a relatively smaller footprint to, to, uh, you know, to, for, for this, for this law to, to be implemented. But, um, my, my, my feeling is, is that this is really a temporary ordinance. As a former council member, uh, once said, everything we do is reversible. We can change our mind. And to me, what the, what this ordinance does is it gives us the opportunity to flesh out, um, all the details of the bill. One of the things that can happen is there can be a lot of unintended consequences. I, I, I think it's great that some of these cities have already put in, uh, uh, conditions or they've allowed SB nine to go in, but we really don't know. I always think that we think that, think these things through and I think that's what the, the urgency ordinance does. It also, um, gives us the idea to, to do a little bit more intelligent planning and it allows us to get more input from the public. And as far as being compared to other cities, you know, up and down the peninsula, um, we're not them. We're not Mill Valley. We're not Saratoga. We're not Palo Alto. Uh, we're San Carlos and so we need to be very prudent and thoughtful about how we craft, uh, whatever rules and regulations that we're going to put together that, that reflect what the people of this town really want. So, um, those are my immediate thoughts. I'm, I'm interested to hear what my, my colleagues, uh, also have to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Vice Mayor Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, I, I also appreciate all the comments from, from everyone, uh, today and, and I look forward to hearing from the rest of my colleagues. Um, I will be supporting this urgency ordinance today because, um, I, I, what I, part, what I want to say is I, I do think this is a threat and it's a threat to local governance. Um, this is another example of Sacramento knows best, um, versus working with us as a partner. Um, and so I think, uh, by enacting this urgency ordinance, it allows us to do our job locally and to put in, in, in a, a more permanent ordinance that better reflects, uh, as much as possible what our community, uh, view is and our visions are. Uh, and I will say that we are building housing. Uh, we are, uh, there are multiple projects from the last couple councils. There'll be more coming down the road. We have two of, all affordable projects that are being done. One that looks near, near completion behind the Incinis and the second one that required us to, to invoke eminent domain to do an all affordable, um, project. And so, uh, what I would prefer is for Sacramento to be a partner with us and look at ways to provide funding uh, and financing for more affordable housing instead of trying to tell us how to, how to, where to put the housing versus working as partner with us. So I think, uh, I think it's prudent to do this urgency ordinance to get things in place so that we can, uh, look at something long-term and, and per council member Colin's comments, we may find as part of a longer term ordinance, things that we want to change that, that make more sense. So we may not, we may have missed the mark on certain things. So I think this is a good next step and, uh, I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Count, uh, Vice Mayor Rack. Um, are there any other comments from my colleagues? Uh, Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
And thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and, uh, thank you for, uh, the discussion, uh, from the community members and sharing their concerns and input. Um, I think as a council, I mean, we've reiterated for several years in a row uh, that the creation of affordable housing, uh, is a priority for us. And, um, in fact, as part of, uh, uh, the zoning update to our housing, um, we have actually tasked staff uh, to, uh, make sure that we, um, not only meet the arena number, but we actually exceed it. Um, and as part of that, uh, discussion, I recall in the fall, uh, we did task staff to provide a recommendation on how we would update, uh, the housing element of our strategic plan, uh, to address the legislature. to address the legislative requirements in a way that is consistent with the voice of the residents, the spirit of the law, and the unique nature of our community. I believe that the housing element and its zoning regulations should provide the vision and path to accomplish those things. This approach will provide a forty-five day period within which to draft a plan to meet these objectives. And I would encourage all those who called in tonight to continue to participate in that process so that we can really understand the implications of SB nine and how to create that much needed housing that we need. And, you know, if at some point during this discussion it's appropriate, I, I would like staff to potentially address some of the questions of, of the community members who called in. For example, there was some concern about the rationale behind this, and some people taking offense to it. And there was another item that I forgot to note, but if we could, you know, just, just wanted to put that out there. So thank you for the discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer Lohan. Actually, that, I'm glad you brought that up. I'm wondering, perhaps Jeff and Greg, could you take a couple minutes to address? I do think that there was some, you know, comments by the public about the language of the urgency ordinance and the use of certain words like threat and health and public safety. Could you, could you respond to that and just add a little clarity, please?
Perhaps I'll, I'll start since that sounds more like a legal question, Madam Mayor. You know, the government code sixty-five eight fifty-eight is the, is the law that deals with urgency ordinances that is set forth in the staff report. It's a forfeit votes required a super majority to, to pass such an ordinance, and they take effect immediately. And it's, and the urgency finding that the, the public was speaking about is, I think, the, the issue, and that language is right out of the statute, that there's an urgency and an immediate threat to health and safety and welfare requiring immediate action by the council. So in the, in the urgency ordinance, section two and three have the basis for setting for the, for the urgency. And essentially, Councilmember Rack, I think, had it pretty close that this urgency, if you will, was imposed upon the city by the state, that they enacted this law only in September of twenty twenty-one. And so our time to respond to it and, and understand what we could potentially do as a local agency were implicated by that state law. And what, what this urgency ordinance does is it creates interim regulations that allow more housing. They do allow more housing. It's not that we're, it's not a moratorium. We're, we're allowing SB nine projects to come forward. But what is absent in our current code, and which is, that creates the urgency, by my way of thinking, is the absence of the objective standards that the state law speaks to. So we are, that's what we're trying to do with this urgency ordinance, is to create objective standards that are allowed under the code. And while we study the full implications and develop a final policy recommendation for the council on what a permanent ordinance is going to look like, we, we think that these are appropriate regulations that are allowed under SB nine, because there is a component of local control. And this is designed to get us to the point where we can recommend a permanent ordinance. Now, well, the, the law requires us to, you know, you only have forty-five days, so it's likely that we'll be requesting that you extend the ordinance, but we don't anticipate it's going to take the full year to, to get through the final ordinance, because we're going to quickly learn what, what the interpretation of, of the code is and get the impact from the, from the public. What, what the objective standards, the, the final objective standard should be, and then we'd move forward with that. I don't know, I don't want to overstate how quickly we can do it, but we'll be able to, I think we'd be able to accomplish it in four years.
Thank you, Greg. Councilmember Palmer Lohan, do you think that addresses your concerns?
Yeah, that, that's helpful. I appreciate that. And then there was also another concern about the jobs housing gap. And we, I know we've also talked about that in previous council meetings. So if, if it's possible, if we could perhaps have Al or somebody from the planning department discuss where we currently stand as a community and what we're anticipating as a result of our upcoming zoning changes to, to our housing, that would be, if, if you're, if we're open to that discussion, I'd appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, I can talk a little bit about that.
Yes, please.
So as noted earlier, we're right in the middle of our housing element update, and we've had about a year of community engagement. And we've discussed various ideas with the community about how would we accommodate the units that the state is requiring us to plan for. The state requires us to remove constraints for those units, so we don't necessarily have to build them over this mandated eight-year period, but we have to show where those housing, new housing units would go. And to show that there are less constraints from a zoning standpoint to do that. And so we've been running the numbers, and, and we've talked to the community about, well, where in the community would this occur? And we've looked at areas along El Camino Real, San Carlos Avenue, and in and around the multifamily here, multifamily housing areas in and around the downtown. And so what we are looking at at this time is the, the state requirement, plus we're, we're adding a little bit of a surplus to this, is about thirty-two hundred units that we need to plan for over the next eight years. And in looking at these things, the community was open to the idea of increasing heights along El Camino and San Carlos Avenue, and increasing densities, which over the years have been limited, and ceilings have put on, been put on how many units you can build on your lot, based on the size of the lot and things like that, and where it's located. Some of the things that we've also talked about are how, if we are going to build more housing, how do we make the transitions from higher density housing areas and single-family residential neighborhoods? And we've had some discussions with the community about how to go about that. And so the next step is we will be approaching the community with some of these solutions. We'll be talking about, you know, how many units we think we can get based on our current ideas, and our jobs housing balance in our community. What is our jobs housing balance? And what's healthy, and where the city's going in the next few years? So that's where we are today. I'm not sure the, if Lisa Porus is online, she might know the dates for the next meeting. In fact, I believe this Wednesday night, we have a scoping meeting for the environmental impact, impact report with the planning commission on the housing. And that concludes my, my comments.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan, does that satisfy your request?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that perspective.
I do too. Okay, Councilmember Dugan, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Laura. I appreciated both of those concerns. And I'm glad we had staff direct, respond to those directly. And I would as echo, I certainly appreciate everyone calling in tonight. It, it gave us a sense of, you know, that this is a significant issue. And again, that's why I do support this ordinance this evening, mostly so that we can really do the work here, reach out to the community. I do not consider this a first draft of the permanent ordinance. I think we have a lot of work to do. I think we have a lot of people to hear from and a lot of things to think through before we do craft what will be a, a permanent ordinance. And I believe every city will have to do something, because this is a, this SB nine is too vague, frankly. That's my assessment. And I think every city will have to come up with an ordinance of one kind or another, just to simply allow rational planning guidance in town. So I'm not, I don't, I can't speak to what Redwood City's planning to do, but they, I, I will be surprised if they don't do something just because right now I don't think you can plan under SB nine clearly. So we definitely have work to do. This ordinance this evening will give us the time to do that. And I just want to assure everyone who called in and, and otherwise, we are a, we do lean forward on housing. We recognize there is a housing crisis. We spent a lot of time this fall talking about that. And we're engaged in this RENA process, which is, you know, a very serious state mandate. It's asking us, a community of thirty thousand, to embrace at least twenty-seven hundred new housing units in the next eight years. That's dramatic. And we're taking that seriously. I'm working with Rod on the Housing Subcommittee and with staff, and it's, it, that's not easy to do. That will require significant upzoning in many areas of our town. And we are considering, you know, where does density make sense in our town, and El Camino, San Carlos Avenue? And there are additional opportunities on the east side that I think over time we will certainly have to be looking at. So we do take housing very seriously. We do recognize there's a crisis, and we are not going to waive that requirements like RENA. For example, even though RENA has handed us down twenty-seven hundred as our required, that we, we're required to demonstrate we can meet that goal, as Al Sade just laid out, we're actually planning to thirty-two hundred. So we're planning for more than the requirement, because it's understood not everything will get built. So that's how serious we're taking housing here in San Carlos. And I do think it is important that we pause here and take the time to also seriously consider how to allow good planning under the new regime of SB nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. I too would like to thank the community. We heard a lot of differing perspectives tonight. And I'm also especially appreciative of our staff's work so far and the comments from my colleagues. We do have a lot of work ahead of us, and I think this is an opportunity to review the legislation and be thoughtful. Our council, as several of my colleagues have mentioned tonight, continues to make housing a top priority, and we are in the process of updating our housing element now. And concurrently, it's important for us to analyze the impacts of this legislation on our community. I do continue to think that to really move the needle on affordable housing, the state needs to provide significantly more funding. And I've noted in past meetings, one project alone that I reviewed on the Housing Endowments and Regional Trust Board, two hundred and twenty-five units of a hundred percent affordable housing was estimated to cost a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars with the city giving land. So these projects, building affordable housing, it's extremely expensive, and funding from the state remains woefully inadequate. And that remains a significant hurdle to seeing affordable housing projects come to life. So I hope that in the future, our state legislature, our state legislators will really work on figuring out the funding behind this, these, these legislative steps that they're taking. With that, Crystal, I believe I was informed that there is a member of the public who has their hand back up. Is that still the case?
Yes. Oh, now we have two hands back up.
But we've.
I know that the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, just to let you know, remind you.
Yes. So I did want to pull my colleagues to ask if there's interest in reopening the public hearing so that we can hear these two comments, or if you would like to move on.
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to move that we reopen a public hearing.
Madam Mayor, can, I just want, are they, are they new comments for people who weren't able to be a part of the public hearing? Or there are people who wanted to now, after they've heard our comments, provide responses? I guess that would be my only question.
Crystal, are you able to answer that?
Both hands up are from the members of the public who have already spoken.
Madam Mayor, I will second the motion to open public comment.
Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Okay, so first hand up is David Tuzman. You should be able to unmute.
Well, thanks for opening public comment again. I, I, I want to, I want to say I, I don't think that the city attorney really answered the question about the language that says there's a current and immediately, immediate threat to public peace, health, welfare, safety to the single-family neighborhoods that could arise from SB nine subdivisions and accompanying developments. I understand it's boilerplate language, but that's not, that's not a full reason to say that just because you use boilerplate language, that whatever you call a threat is really a threat. I would, I would like more explanation of how, how, how this could be perceived as a threat to public peace, health, welfare, and safety to allow soft density when we already have that in the town in a lot of places, and it's not a public threat to health, but welfare and safety. So I, I'd ask to have the attorney comment about again, or maybe the council members discuss more about it. And thanks for the opportunity to comment again. That's cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Josh Wallace, and I'll be followed by Joel Cohen.
Hi, this is Sandra Wallace. I'm, and I just wanted to say that, number one, yes, this is a threat to people who have been San Carlos residents, residents all over California for many, many years, who have worked hard to buy their houses, to keep their houses, to live, yes, the suburban dream, but it, it is a threat to all of us. I do support the urgency ordinance. Thank you so much for going through with this. And I also want to say that there were a number of housing advocates from out of town tonight, and that unfortunately doesn't represent San Carlos and our residents. So my big question to you is, how will your outreach go out to the majority of residents who don't understand what SB nine is, who don't understand what's coming through the council to try to address the details of SB nine, which by the way, is a really complex bill. And I do agree that it is too vague a bill in order to enact it. There's going to be a lot of trouble with this. So in any event, my big comment right now is to make sure that the majority of San Carlos residents hear about this, understand how they can address their concerns, exactly how they can contact you. Is it only individual emails to city council members? Is there another way? Is there a, any text opportunity on the website? Just get the information out there to the majority of residents, because what we heard tonight, I think, from the public is not really representative of what San Carlos currently is and has been for so long. So thank you so much for your support and your work. I appreciate it all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. And the last hand up is Joel Cohen.
Thank you very much for, for, for hearing me again. I, I must say, I am, I am rather disappointed that you decided to go with the, go through with the, the urgency ordinance. As I said before, you know, we're in a housing crisis, and I don't think putting more restrictions on what can be built is, is especially prudent. I, well, you know, in, in the interim between, between my previous comment and the, and the vote, I did some looking online, and it appears that in our last, in the last ten years, San Carlos has built nine, four hundred and nine homes and added four thousand five hundred and seventy-five new jobs, one which is actually mine. I am employed by somebody in San Carlos, but I work in another, in another city. And I think that's, that's unfortunate, you know, there's very clearly a jobs to housing imbalance here. And I don't think, you know, making it harder to build housing is, is, is a good idea, you know, as, you know, SB nine has its own set of regulations, and I don't think it's prudent to, to add more on top of it, you know. We have, you know, people can, let people make their own decisions about what they want to, what they want to put on their property, instead of trying to, you know, craft some sort of, you know, imagined ideal, ideal housing situation. And I mean fundamentally, you know, a lot of the criticisms about things like parking, or water, or crowding, I, I think they're spurious, you know. It's like, if people are using, if people are using water somewhere, or if people move into San Carlos and use water there, it's like, if they're pushed, if they're not able to come there, they're going to use it somewhere else. So unless they're moving to a different drainage basin, you know, they're, they're still using the same bloody water at the end of the day. So yes, I'm, I'm disappointed, and I hope you will, will reconsider and will not, will not put these regulations in permanently as, as SB nine comes into effect. Because I think fundamentally, it's, you know, a decent enough law for, for our purposes, and I'm hoping that we'll, you know, continue to build more housing rather than, you know, build lots of jobs and then be. and then be shocked when people uh, have to drive from three counties over to uh, get to their jobs. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that was the last hand.
Madam Mayor, I'll uh, once again move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes. Okay, well, thank you for the comments. Um, I think, I'll request that um, perhaps Mr. Tuzman could uh, follow up with the city attorney. I think that, I, I don't really wanna go back and forth on the semantics at this time. Um, are there any further uh, discussion points from my colleagues on this item? Okay. Uh, let's see, at this point, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Urgency Ordinance Number?
Fifteen seventy-six.
Fifteen, and ordinance of the city council, the city of San Carlos pursuant to Government Code Section six five eight five eight B imposing interim regulations and objective standards for the subdivision and development of qualified Senate Bill nine properties.
I'll second.
Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Rack?
Oh. Yes.
Is there any?
Oh.
Further discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yeah, th- thank you, Madam Mayor. I, there are just a couple of points I wanted to make. Um, you know, SB nine or no SB nine, we've been focusing on housing since I've been on the council and that's over ten years. So long before, I think Scott Weiner was even in the legislature, we were talking about housing in, in San Carlos. All of us, except maybe Adam, who also cares about housing, have been involved in various, you know, committees and commissions and JPAs and that sort of thing, trying to build more housing. Um, and even though I disagree with some of the people who, you know, called in, um, I do appreciate your input. It's helpful and it'll be helpful to the process. But it's also important to remember that um, even without, you know, if SB nine didn't even exist, we would be building more housing. We would be wanting and planning to build more housing. And SB nine even uh, wants us to build. To me, the question isn't the amount of housing, it's where we build the housing. And SB nine wants us to, to spread it out into areas that really aren't suitable, you know, in, in, in terms of infrastructure for it. Um, in terms of the, of the, of the, the way the neighborhoods are designed. It's better to build the housing where the infrastructure is there for it. And that's around transit hubs, much, much closer. And so I, I, I hope people don't get the impression that um, we're, we're fighting housing. Anything but that. Uh, it, it is, it's really quite the contrary. We are trying to do, this is about determining how and where we've built the housing. So I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that as this process goes forward, and I think maybe Jeff can give us some direction in terms of, of uh, the kind of public input or opportunity for public input that was mentioned by one of the speakers, that we will, we will get the public's input and we will find out more about how people feel. And then we'll make some good decisions uh, going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Um, I'm wondering if City Manager Jeff Maltby could hop on for just a moment and address the public outreach part of um, of this process, please?
Sure, um, well, we'll be having obviously Planning Commission meetings, City Council meetings on this. Um, in terms of crafting uh, public ordinance, typically there'll be um, at least one community meeting. We do, we notify the public um, via social media um, um, or uh, email signup lists that we have um, thousands of residents um, signed up for, um, as well as the public noticing process and, and all those things. Um, so we'll be looking for, you know, as much um, to cast that net as broadly as we can to get as much public input as we can when we craft, you know, not only this ordinance, but um, you know, the more comprehensive um, process, which is, is the housing element update that we've, we've been working on and notifying the public on um, and going through. Because this is really our, our opportunity um, to make these long-term uh, land use changes to, that, that our residents would like to see happen. Um, and, and to comply with laws like SB nine, SB ten and uh, and those kinds of things. So um, you know, this is, this is work that, that, you know, began here many, many years ago, um, continues today and is gonna continue for many, many years to come. Um, I've seen just this city council, I think, invest upwards of, you know, fourteen million dollars. Um, our annual budget is only forty million dollars, um, half of which goes to public safety um, for affordable housing. So you're ma- you're making large financial contributions to build affordable housing. You've passed numerous ordinances to um, uh, make uh, the creation of housing in our community more viable. And you have a lot in the work to continue that process. So I think there's um, a lot that um, this council has to be proud of, as well as your predecessors have to be proud of. And um, you know, that, that those of us who, who continue to work on it or our successors in the future, um, will have plenty to keep them busy in terms of a, addressing this issue.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, do my colleagues have any further discussion before we call the roll? Okay, seeing none, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Okay. Vice Mayor Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Okay, now we'll move on to item ten A, the study session to receive a presentation on year-round lighting in the downtown. From Amy Newby, go ahead, Amy.
Hi, good evening, Mayor McDowell, Vice Mayor Rack and council members. Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. Sorry, I like stumbled on that, first time this year, calling out the new mayor and new mayor. Good to see you guys tonight. Um, so my presentation is pretty brief this evening. Um, a little background of the lighting of Laurel Street. If you were unaware, it did begin in twenty-ten with our inaugural Night of Holiday Lights event. Um, there are this standard C nine bulbs that are swung from lamp pole to lamp pole across Laurel Street on um, between San Carlos Avenue and Olive. As you may see downtown, the lights are strung just prior to Thanksgiving weekend. They are lit at our annual Night of Holiday Lights event. And then they are removed just around the new year. Um, and the cost to hang the lights annually, the current contract is twenty-five thousand dollars. There are a few factors to consider, um, should you choose to keep the lights up year-round. First would be our maintenance contract. Uh, we're currently in a contract with a vendor who hangs the lights each holiday season. So we would have to terminate that contract and then seek out a contract with a new scope of services. Um, see, second is we would wanna evaluate the tension of the lamp poles. Um, we would wanna determine if they can withstand that constant tension of the cable that the lights are strung on. And it would be a possibility that we may need to retrofit the poles in order to withstand that tension year-round. Um, sometimes they just with high winds or certain inclement weather, um, the cable may snap. And in the last, I guess now, what is it, eleven years? We've had a cable snap one time where our contractor came out and repaired that. And then lastly, just one thing to consider, because lighting of Laurel Street is kind of the, one of our main attractions of our Night of Holiday Lights event. Um, is, the city would wanna maybe consider, would we add a new attraction to that event so that it continues to just be discussive and um, something to do for Night of Holiday Lights? Um, so very brief, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any questions from the council? Uh, Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Amy, for the presentation. Um, I was just, you know, wondering about this, would, would there be an opportunity also for us to think about extending this to uh, the other um, areas of uh, of, of um, San Carlos, for example, like uh, Solah, what we're calling Solah, South Laurel, there's some really nice restaurants down there. Um, we've also heard uh, from our industrial arts um, design um, area that, you know, some, you know, better enhanced lighting might uh, be helpful to them. We do have a lot of nightlife activity in both areas. And I'm just wondering if there'd be an appetite for us to explore expanding this program to those areas and shining a little light on other good things in the community.
Sure, um, council could consider that. Um, that also could be considered as part of the um, downtown plan, decorative lighting um, further along Laurel Street or in other areas of the community. And, you know, if the money is spent now, um, if council wanted to move that in that direction, there would just be the purchase of supplies and then the cost of the installation. Um, you know, should the downtown plan come up with something, a different style, then that would just be an interim solution now to light that area and not so long-term. But that could be done.
And I'll just add, I think our plan to move forward, you know, depending what the direction from the council is tonight, is that we would go out and get um, uh, bids on, you know, putting up the lights and, and maintaining them um, and bring that back to the council for approval. So that would be, you know, the actual action item. So if there are other areas that you want us to include in that bid process, letting us know tonight as part of this item would be very helpful so that we could in, include um, you know, those requests in our, in our proposal gathering and, and bring you back the full um, picture for what you're looking for.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Palmer Lohan, Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And uh, yeah, I, I especially appreciate that in the sense of uh, you know, lights are good, they're fun, they're festive. Uh, we should have them in, in all the areas of our town that um, uh, bring nightlife. I just think it'd be a nice addition. And, and I, my question is, um, the uh, uh, perhaps, you know, the, the, the beauty of LED bulbs is, you know, they very seldom burn out. You can install them once and they're pretty solid state. Um, so I, you know, w- we will find this out, I suppose, but do we have a sense? I mean, is this, we could even save money, I think. It's a lot of work to take those lights up and down every year. Where if we just buy them and install them and, you know, maybe one strand goes out a year or something. But it's probably a cost-saving opportunity. Do we have any sense of that?
Potentially, um, with the current blocks that are lit, um, should council choose to expand that area? Um, the maintenance costs could reach what we're currently paying for the insulation and removal each year.
Sure, if we expand it, but say we're just talking Laurel, I mean, it potentially would be less expensive than that. Yeah, so that's interesting. But um, I do appreciate how nice our Night of the Holiday Lights event is. Uh, Amy, have you given it any thought? Do we know what we would maybe do instead if we had the overhead lights year-round? Like, you know, with the, like, what other kinda display could we turn on uh, during that event to still keep that, that nature of the, of the festival?
Um, yeah, hard to say, um, although just coming kind of off the heels of Night of Holiday Lights. Um, you know, it is kind of that, for those that have attended, it's that finale to um, the festive stage show that is put on each year. Um, and, you know, there definitely is some area for a revamping of that. Um, we, we started that stage show probably about, you know, like six or seven years ago. Um, that came a few years into the event. So there's always an opportunity for something, for a change. We haven't thought too much of it. Um, the snow that falls from, in the area, like, kids always love that, families love that. So we could expand on that. Um, or change the show entirely. So that would be up to our, we need community events supervisor to kind of brainstorm new ideas for that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a lot of faith in Amy's team. They're very creative, so. Um, Vice Mayor Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Amy, thanks for the presentation. Um, so I guess that the, I guess, based, following up on sort of Laura's comments and is, um, I'd be interested in kind of thinking about kind of what some other areas are. And even if we, I mean, maybe getting two bids, right? One that just understands kind of what, um, if we just stay where we are and then what if we expand it to sort of Parks of South Laurel? Or I, I don't remember, we don't have lights right now on San Carlos Avenue, right? Is that correct? So that may be another area that's sort of, to me, sort of a gateway and entranceway into the city. So expanding to, to that one block of, or um, you know, of San Carlos Avenue might be a nice opportunity to, to do as well. Um, so I'd be open to, to taking a look at that. And um, I, I think for the Night of Holiday Lights, I will defer to your team's creativity on that. And I'm sure you can uh, come up with something. But I think the benefit of having it year-round is, would, would, um, you know, I, I think would be great for the city and um, you know, something I'm looking forward to supporting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll, I'll chime in and agree, and I'm glad that you raised um, San Carlos Avenue. I, I'd be interested in seeing probably two or three blocks maybe of San Carlos Avenue. Um, and I'm wondering, maybe since we're putting this out to bid, perhaps it could be itemized by area. So keeping it the same, and then San Carlos Avenue, and then Industrial Arts, and then South Laurel. And then we can kind of, um, I don't, maybe each area probably brings with it its own challenges of lighting and opportunities. So um, I think for comparison's sake, that might be useful.
Yeah, and on San Carlos Avenue would be challenging just because of the width of the street. And um, on the center, in the center island, is there something that we can um, attach to? Um, so maybe something like, I can bring back some other options if it's stringing lights or along the um, the top of the building. Um, that obviously would need the building owner's agreeance, but um, that could be another option. Should it be challenging to string the light across the street, the San Carlos Avenue?
Thank you, Amy. Uh, Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I certainly um, appreciate mentioning San Carlos Avenue. I mean, we should just uh, you know, think broadly of, of where we may like lights and then get all this itemized. Um, but the one um, thing I would like us to consider is, when I think of kind of year-round lights in cities, what you usually see, what I think is nice is when the municipal trees are lit and those kind of stay lit year-round. Um, so I would really like to see um, that get priced. And, and that would be easy, right? On San Carlos Avenue or some of these other areas, let's just light the trees. Cause on Laurel, those are lit year-round, the trees. So maybe that's what we extend through the city. Um, and then the overhead lights, um, you know, honestly, I, I don't mind thinking of those as seasonal, but maybe those could be overhead. But yeah, I don't see a stringing overhead lights everywhere around the city. But, you know, uh, maybe let's see all the numbers and, and think about it. So I guess what I'm saying is, let's make sure we itemize the different areas. But let's also get itemized the municipal trees um, uh, separate from any kind of overhead or along the building type lighting.
Hey, sounds like a good idea to me. Uh, Amy, uh, do you guys need any other further guidance from us since this is just a study session?
Um, no, I think what I'll come back with are some options for Laurel Street, the six, seven, eight hundred block, what that maintenance contract would look like, um, looking kind of a few other blocks of Laurel Street, and then looking to see what we can do on San Carlos Avenue.
And the industrial arts area.
Right, the industrial arts, and yes. And then perhaps um, trees separate from stringing lights as well.
No, I, I think we wanted to see south of Laurel as well, if we're getting quotes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I was just gonna comment on Amy's suggestion around, you know, without holiday lights, that being the kind of the end of the event, um, what else might they do? I, um, I think, well, I would echo just the suggestion that um, that some of the alternative, you know, programming suggestions be brought forward. I don't know if that would be part of this or something else, but I just wanted, I wanted to just uh, share my perspective on that as well to support that idea. And I, and I'll also like the San Carlos Avenue idea as well. Many different ways to string a light, I suppose.
Lots of opinions here, okay.
And just last um, clarification, is this something that council would like to see prior to the budget or included in the budget? And just last clarification, is this something that council would like to see prior to the budget or included in the budget? Now that we're looking at a much larger scale, just wanted to be clear on that.
I see Jeff coming on too.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, you know, let's get some quotes and then come back and actually talk numbers with council. You know, I mean, if, if we're getting, if, if the council were gonna consider the full package, I'd say you probably ultimately want to wait to do it as part of the budget. Because it's probably gonna be really expensive. And, and because some of these areas are gonna need electricity and that's gonna be, that's gonna be the big cost. Whereas, you know, some blocks are, that's already built into the infrastructure, so it's not that big of a deal. Other areas, it's gonna be a very big deal. So if you're looking at the full package, I probably imagine when you see the price tag, you're gonna want to consider it alongside other items. To determine whether or not the full package would be a priority. But we'll get to work on the bids and bring that back to you when we've got them.
Sounds fair to me. Vice Mayor Rack?
You're gonna call yourself Vice Mayor McDowell? Sorry, I might need a moment now, now. Can Jeff, and maybe Jeff can answer this question. So given that we've got the lights up on Laurel right now. In, in that part, assuming the cost for that is pretty minimal, because we, if we don't take them down. Is that something why you go through this process that we can just leave those lights up, assuming that sort of at a minimum? You know, it sounds like, there's, I'll just assume at a minimum, there's, it seems like the council's sort of supportive of that piece. And we want to look at sort of a broader, larger cost, but can we leave the lights up now? Or what does the contract look like at this point?
That would be my plan, to leave the existing lights in place until the council makes a determination, one way or the other.
That'd be great. I, I appreciate that. I think that's a good idea.
They would have already been removed if, if we didn't put a halt to that, to that. So our current vendor's on hold and we can leave those up and look to see where we can expand.
Okay, do we, do we already own those lights?
We do.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, great discussion, everyone. I think the bid is going to be robust, so. Moving on to item eleven, agenda setting, we'll move to item A, considerations. Oh wait, I didn't take public comment. Sorry, Crystal, is there any public comment?
No, there, there were no hands.
Okay, great. Agenda setting, eleven A, consideration of agendizing an item to consider providing free feminine hygiene products. In all city-owned restrooms. I will note that items discussed in this agenda setting section will be considered by the council for placing on a future agenda. No action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So who should I turn this over to?
This is my item, so, this is my item, so I will, I guess, give a, give my pitch on it. So I just, I, I'd read an article, or I should say, my family pointed me to an article. Where I think it was Flint, Michigan had, had done this and others are, I think, are, are looking to do that in different places. And I just felt like we should consider doing that in the public restrooms in the city as a good example. And it, it, I think, you know, you have toilet paper in there, you have other things you should, people should have what they need in the restrooms. And so I think it's a, would be a nominal expense. I think it's something worth looking into and just adding to whatever contract, contract we have on maintenance. So I wanted to see if we can agendize that and that's it.
Other comments from my colleagues, Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Rack for bringing us forward. I really appreciate it. To me, this is a, yes, absolutely, we should look at this. And I, I, I don't know that a whole detailed report would be necessary, perhaps just it could be a consent counter item in future, but it seems very reasonable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, I would just say, I, I agree. I think it's a low-cost item and, you know, it's just something we probably should do. So, yeah, and it probably does feel like a consent item in the future. I don't, I don't think it's gonna move the needle, so very supportive.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins.
Yes, what I was wondering, and I, I agree, I think it's a good idea to talk about it. I, I'm wondering whether or not maybe we ought to just combine A and B in, into one agenda item. Is there any reason we wouldn't do that? Unless somebody's, you know, vehemently opposed to the second item, so.
You're chipping me out of my, my statement, though, council.
I mean, I got a fourteen granddaughter now that I gotta think about, so.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I, I'd like to hear Mayor McDowell's statement on, on item. Eleven B, but I also appreciate Councilmember Collins's remarks, because I was gonna say the same thing I said on the first one.
Okay, so I am also wholeheartedly in support of item eleven A. So I think you have full support there, Vice Mayor Rack, and I really appreciate you bringing it up. And I think, yeah, my, so the second one is from something that I wanted to request my colleagues to agendize also. Is installing diaper changing stations in both men's and women's bathrooms in city-owned property. You know, dads or parents too. And I think here in San Carlos, it's important to ensure that we're providing equal access for them to care for their babies as well. So I agree that I think these two items are related. I will note also that there's some legislation from the state AP eleven twenty-seven that I think governs this too. So I will turn it over, Councilmember Dugan, I saw your hand first.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, I firmly support eleven B. I will say, when, when my children were young, Saturdays were always Dad's Day. And I always had the babies and I would usually take them to a park. And I can still remember having to go over to my, my SUV to do all the changing. So, and elsewhere in the world, I, I made quite a bit of use of public baby changing stations. So, you know, my kids are a little older now, but I, I think we should have this, so supportive.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Rack?
Thank you for, Mayor McDowell, for bringing this up. I certainly would support this as well. I think it's a great idea. And I, I, I wonder if we can, if we, it sounds like if there's consensus, if we can just bring this up on consent, that would be great. I don't know if that's possible from this process, but I would be happy to support that effort for both of them.
I see heads nodding. Yes, okay, Councilmember Palmer Lohan, go ahead.
Yes, just aligned, fully aligned, let's, yes. Long overdue.
Great, City Manager Maltby, do you have what you need from us on these two items?
They sure do. We'll prepare something for you and bring it back. And I think likely we'll be able to make that a, a consent item for you to consider. If you give us just a little bit of time to pull it all together, we'll bring you back sort of a complete recommendation package.
Sounds good to me, Councilmember Collins.
I, I, I just, I have another agenda setting item I want to bring up when we're done with this, so.
Okay, I think we're done with this. Why don't you go ahead?
All right, I just wanted to find out if there might be support for a resolution. To our federal representatives, our US Congress representatives. Regarding proposing some changes to the Americans with Disabilities Act. We all have recently heard about and experienced. What I would call vexatious litigant lawyers going around suing restaurants for not being ADA client. We had a restaurant on Laurel Street just closed down. I went by it yesterday, the sign, the sign said, "Closed permanently due to ADA lawsuits." So I did talk to the city attorney about it and I would like us to, I'd like to see if there's support for agendizing. A discussion around supporting a resolution urging our members of Congress to propose some changes to that law.
Other thoughts from my council colleagues, Vice Mayor Rack?
So I, Ron, I appreciate bringing this up, and I know it's been an issue with a lot of. Businesses downtown, and there's been some challenges around that. And I guess my only thought is, I, I want to understand like kind of what. Before we'd agenda something, I'd love if, if you would, or if we could come back and understand a little bit better about what, what that would look like and proposal. Because normally we have these sort of items, there's a little bit of more detail versus, so I, 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 I'd be, I would want some more detail basically. To understand kind of what, what we'd want to say in a letter, what would be, or a couple items of what you might want to propose. And then I'd happy to be, be happy to consider it at that point, just from my end, I think.
Right, well, I don't know how much we can, I mean, I don't know how much we can keep, we can keep talking about it. I think if we had a, as an item, we could, then we could flesh out those things and we could, we could ask Greg more questions. I, I defer to Greg to tell us what are our limits of this discussion are.
Yeah, tonight, I mean, we're, because this was not the previously listed, we're, we're more limited on discussing about the subject matter. So I, I think I, I would consider this more, more or less, do you want us to, do you want it to come back to? In some form, whether it's a study session or a proposed letter, it's just, it's just a matter of the amount of work we'd want to do. In light of Councilmember Rack's comment, I think we probably would just want it to come back. Probably as another agenda setting item and then we can talk about kind of what your, specifically what your concerns are, Councilmember Collins. At that point, we'd have, we'd have more leeway to talk about.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to do that, yeah.
And, and I, I would just add, I think, just Greg, I think there's, right, you've got state. You know, sort of issues and laws with this regarding this as well, so it's not just federal, there's state. So it's a little more complex from that end. I'd like, that, that's, I think, I'd just like to get a little more thought around it, Ron, before we sort of, were to vote on, from my perspective.
That's exactly why I want to have the discussion. All right, so we can put it on as an agenda setting item next time, I guess, and we'll see how people feel about it.
I'll go ahead and add that to the next agenda under agenda setting for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Crystal, are there any, any public comment? I forgot to take public comment on the first two things under this agenda setting section.
There have been no hands.
Okay, great. Any further comments from my colleagues on agenda setting? Okay. So we're gonna move on to item twelve. We are adjourning this evening's meeting in memory of Patrick Boland, a longtime San Carlos resident. And retired public transportation executive, who devoted himself to his family and to our community. Pat had an undeniably sunny attitude during his decades of employment at Sam Trans. His many years refereeing youth basketball and baseball. His countless hours volunteering with the Chamber of Commerce for the annual art and wine festival. His many tours of sitting in as Santa Claus on Laurel Street. And the countless seasons spent at Britton Acres Elementary School in its bugs gardening program. With his eye for design and his talent for writing, Pat also served as ghost editor for the city's Good Living Newsletter. When his wife and city clerk at the time, Christine, was producing it for publication. Pat was committed to the city of San Carlos in a manner that was engaging, selfless and undeniable. He will be greatly missed and we extend our heartfelt sympathies to his wife Christine, his son Tom. And his daughter Julia. Thank you all this evening for being here with us. We will adjourn in honor of Patrick Boland. Take care, stay well, and this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.